Six thirty Tuesday. April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. We're going to begin with our invocation by Pastor Leonard Himes of the Henry County Fire Department, and then our pledge of allegiance.
Well, good evening. Could we stand together, please? Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Our Father in heaven, Lord, we thank you tonight as we have this privilege of assembling together. And, Lord, assembled for government. And we know that you've given us a land and a law. And so I ask tonight that, Lord, that your presence would be known in this place. That we would be those, Lord, that not only govern and govern well, but govern according to principle and not political pushing. Bless this meeting, whatever may be on the agenda. And God, we need you, and I ask you now to protect our law enforcement officers. Lord, standing in the gap, standing, Lord, to protect us wherever they may be this hour, that you'd watch over them, protect them, help them. And our firefighters, Lord, whether in the house or on a call, that you would surround them with your love and care. Bless the administration and this meeting tonight, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. I have a few announcements. The following planning and zoning items were posted at the property site for a public meeting, but has been postponed by staff. RZ dash twenty-one dash sixteen. The Helpburn Enterprises, Inc. of Atlanta request a rezoning. That has been postponed. That has been postponed. The following planning and zoning item advertised. The following planning and zoning item advertised. RZ twenty-one dash fourteen. RZ twenty-one dash fourteen. The Reservoir Group LLC The Reservoir Group LLC has requests a postponement. This has been tabled by the applicant. has requests a postponement. This has been tabled by the applicant. So if it's anyone here for either of those planning and zoning matters, So if it's anyone here for either of those planning and zoning matters, those items have been postponed and tabled to another meeting sometime in May. those items have been postponed and tabled to another meeting sometime in May. This will be the Willow Lane, This will be the Willow Lane, Safford Bridges Road, Safford Bridges Road, and the East Lake, and the East Lake, East Lake Parkway. East Lake Parkway. Both of those items have been postponed, one in District Four, one in District Three. Both of those items have been postponed, one in District Four, one in District Three. Also, we'll be removing the item from the agenda resolution, approving the purchase of two command vehicles. Also, we'll be removing the item from the agenda resolution, approving the purchase of two command vehicles. That will be removed from the agenda as well. That will be removed from the agenda as well. And I am going to move our executive session. And I am going to move our executive session. Uh, we're Uh, we're need to go into executive session for litigation and real estate matters. Can I get a motion? need to go into executive session for litigation and real estate matters. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve. Move to approve.
Got a motion? Can I get a second? Got a motion? Can I get a second? All in favor? All in favor? We're gonna take a break and go into executive session. We will be back shortly. We're gonna take a break and go into executive session. We will be back shortly.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so we're gonna move into presentations.
Who's gonna do the presentation for, um, the proclamation re- recognizing National County Government Month? Any opposed?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I have a proclamation for you recognizing April twenty twenty-two as National County Government Month. And it reads, whereas the National Association of Counties, NACO, maintains the nation's three thousand sixty-nine counties, parishes, and boroughs serving more than three hundred and fifteen million Americans, providing essential services to create healthy and safe and vibrant communities. And whereas counties provide public health services, administer justice, keep communities safe, foster economic opportunities, service roadways, collaborate in crisis, and much more. And whereas Henry County takes pride in its responsibility to protect and enhance the health and well-being and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas for twenty twenty-two, NACO has designated this year's theme as Counties Thrive, especially in supporting residents and businesses during the coronavirus pandemic. And whereas each year since nineteen ninety-one, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. And whereas Henry County Government provides services to more than two hundred and forty thousand residents, and throughout the pandemic continued those services, finding new and creative ways to continue the work of the government for residents, businesses, and other stakeholders while maintaining rigorous health and safety standards. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners recognizes April twenty twenty-two as National County Government Month and encourages all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in county government activities, not only in April, but throughout the year.
Thank you. Before we move to the next presentation, Stephanie, is there a resolution for the sommelie? Where is that?
Yes, ma'am. It'll be the first item that's on the regular agenda after consent.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna have, um, Tucson come forward and do a presentation on impact fees.
Okay, all right. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners. And so we're gonna talk about impact fees very briefly here. So we started this mission back in twenty twenty-one. I think we had our first presentation around September. We went back and had discussions with home builders, uh, the home building community. And out of that conversation, we actually got some recommendations that you'll see later in the presentation. And so we hope to bring this back, uh, May third and the May seventeenth meeting for the two required public hearings per DCA. And at that time, anyone, including the home building community, can, uh, have conversation, have, uh, make, uh, comments have, uh, make, uh, comments on the impact fees. And so, we'll go through this, um, fairly quickly. Of course, we did some comparison amongst cities and counties. And the consultant came up with the $10,000 number as far as what the impact is to the county. And on these slides here, you'll see, in the lower right-hand corner, uh, what fee as a percentage of the project cost. So, the single-family housing, uh, if it was, the fee was $10,000, it'd be 3.2% of the cost of that, of that, um, that house. Last meeting, I briefly stated that staff's recommendation was anywhere between $5,000 to $6,000. Let's see. This slide here. So again, you see where the cost as a percentage of the project cost is 1.74 if the cost was 56, 58. And so, each of the slides demonstrates what it would be if we charged X amount of dollars. At the end of the day, we just really need to know what that fee number is, right? And then you can go in and adjust the percentages, how you want to display it, or how you want to, uh, allocate the money to the different services. And so, we went back and even looked at, it was about, been over about 18 years since we did any type of adjustment to the impact fees. And this graphic shows if we did a 3% uh, increase over the 18 years, you'd come out to about $3,200 of what the fee should actually be today. And this just illustrates the different alternatives, uh, uh, what fees could have been collected based off of the homes that we permitted or at least rezoned in the last couple of years. So you're looking at 2,031 homes and the, uh, impact fee generated is located at the bottom of those numbers. So the $5,600 that I was referring to could have possibly generated roughly $11.5 million compared to the 3.3 we're, uh, collecting right now. And so, these are some of the few considerations, um, that when we talked with the home building community that we came up with. The biggest thing was a grace period. Uh, allowing at least a six-month grace so that they could kind of catch up to what we are proposing. And also, uh, adopting a phased-in program from anywhere between two to five years. And again, this graphic shows what that number would look like if we allowed them to, uh, phase in over a two-to-three-to-four-year period. And so, uh, if you did it over two years, you're looking at the first year, you'd have some homes that were grandfathered in at $1,600. Then the fee would go up to about roughly $2,900. Uh, in the first year, the second year would be $4,200, and by the third year, it would reach the maximum, um, allocation of 58, or 56, 59. And we've done this for each of the alternatives. And really, that's about it. So, um, what we're, what we're looking at, no one wants any fees to go up, right? So, um, I don't think I want the price of gas to go up from the 1990s when I paid 99 cents either, but at some point, we have to catch up to, uh, where we are. And so, this is just an illustration of where we could be, um, where we may need to be. Uh, staff recommendation was basically just off of the 1661 we're collecting now, minus the $10,000, and then splitting that number in half and adding it back to the 1661. So that's kind of how we came up roughly with that $5,000 to $6,000 number. And again, uh, we've heard from the home building community over the last week, like I said, no one wants the fee to go up. But if you look across the metro, you've got Spalding County that's looking to increase their fees. Um, I know Milton's a city, but I think they increase their fees every two years, 18 months or so. Cherokee County is looking again to, uh, do a study on their fees as well, so. And the whole impetus for us doing impact fee, uh, was to add transportation as one of the services, right? And so luckily, we did get the T-spots that is help, that will help. If the true cost of service is $10,000 and we only charge, let's say, $4,000 or $5,000, that $6,000 difference will still need to be made up by the county. So hopefully, we can continue to keep T-spots, but if we don't, this would help us, uh, accommodate that if T-spots was not around. So, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Have any questions from the board?
Tucson, um, I really would like to get a letter or a presentation from Council for Quality Growth. I know the last time you had this meeting, you stated that those people that, um, had a vested interest in impact fees would be here to speak to us. I would definitely prefer to have them speak to us before we, um, make any actions on this. So Council for Quality Growth would be number one person that I would like to hear from.
Yeah.
The other thing, it's a couple of things, I'll just tell you all of them. Uh, I would like to see a side-by-side comparison of the increase on different things so that it doesn't look like we're targeting the housing market to be exclusive or to create exclusionary to keep certain demographics out. So if, uh, if the housings, if single-family houses is going up by 3.2 and hotels is only going up by 1%, then I would want to see, you know, what's the side-by-side comparisons of what it was and what it's going to, to make sure that it's even. And then the impact fees, I'm really concerned about when we increase these impact fees. The county has had, um, a habit or I guess a policy that impact fee, impact fees when it's a one bucket. But when you have way more houses being built in a certain community, impacting fees and having more money, that money should stay in that community because when it's spread out, they still get less services from impact fees. So, Sher, I know we talked about that before, we've been talking about it and talking about it. So, um, you know, if we're gonna raise impact fees, then we need to have equity across the board of the money staying in those community where the impact fees are being generated.
Correct. So, that's how it's, by law, that's how it's supposed to be. Go and accommodate the, the specific district and not in one big bucket. So, we'll, we'll definitely take a look at that.
So I want to say that, and I'm glad you said that. So Nancy, what Tucson has said is by law is supposed to be that way. That is what the law states, but this county has not been doing that. And I've been arguing about that for years, that if a community is, because if it was 32, 3200 houses, they were probably all in one district. And the money went throughout the entire county. So if you could check the legal ramifications, because we shouldn't have to wait to correct something that's legal. Thank you.
And Commissioner Clemens, if I may, we'll need to bring back the resolution because this board approved a resolution doing that. And that has always been a concern of myself is that where impact fees are collected, that is the district in which it has to remain. So we, we will get that back on the agenda hopefully for the next meeting to rescind that resolution. And I assure you that our financial services group is distributing those funds based on where those permits are being pulled.
And thank, and Sher, I know you had been fighting for that. And before when we asked that question, it was, well, you can do however you want to do your vote, but that's not the legal way to do it. And so I'm very concerned about if you're raising impact fees, that you have to make sure that the money stays in the community.
Yes, ma'am. And a couple of things, uh, so I did speak with Council of Quality Growth last week, and they will be present. So the public hearings will allow for Quality Growth, the Home Builders Association, everyone that wants to speak, they can speak at that time. Like I said, there'll be two different, uh, public hearings.
And ask them that when they speak to make their recommendation.
Yeah.
Any additional comments, questions? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we move into the next presentation, I'm going to make an adjustment on the agenda and, uh, move up, um, under the, um, leisure services, the resolution to de- dedicate, uh, and officially name Field One at Warren Holder Park in Locust Grove, Georgia, the Summer Lee Field.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, Henry County residents. Today before you have a resolution to dedicate and officially name Field One at Warren Holder Park in Locust Grove, Georgia, the Summer Lee Field.
Before you get started, I know that, um, Summer, um, the Lee family is here. If you, you all would like to come up, you can while we, um, go through this resolution. I know that her, her mother Kimberly Lee is here. And if any other family members or friends that are here that would like to stand or join, please do so. Jesus. Okay JP, go ahead.
Summer Lee was the daughter of Kenny and Kim Lee. Kenny was an active member of the Locust Grove Athletic Association as a coach and a board member, and Kim was a volunteer. Summer grew up at Warren Holder Park where she began as a cheerleader mascot at age three. Over the years, she played T-ball, softball, football, and was a cheerleader. As she grew older, she remained active in the park as a concession stand worker, assisting with the field maintenance crew and umpiring. Summer was also very active at Locust Grove High School where she played softball and helped as a manager for the football team. Summer was a four-time winner of the Teammate Award voted on by her teammates. The name of the Teammate Award has since been changed to the Summer Lee Outstanding Teammate Award. Summer was a survivor and a fighter of type 1 diabetes. Summer and her family started the Always Summertime Foundation to raise money and awareness for juvenile diabetes by holding an annual fundraising walk from 2006 until 2016. The Always Summertime Found, Summertime Foundation also helps with the Caring For and Calls, Caring For a Cause Team Maddy Tournament. Summer was a beautiful girl that could light up a room with her smile. She had a big personality that was funky and strong-willed. She never met a stranger that was always putting, she never met a stranger and was always putting others first. Summer loved being at the ballpark where she felt right at home. Summer was a senior at Locust Grove High School in August of 2016 at the time of her untimely passing. Considering Summer spent a large part of her life at Warren Holder Park and that she was so involved in every activity at the park, it seems proper and fitting that the field that she grew up on shall be named the Summer Lee Field.
Kimberly, would you like to say anything? Either one?
I don't really know what to say, but I will say that, um, Warren Holder Park has been part of our family for, ever since I was a child. My brothers grew up there and, um, it would be an honor to have this named after Summer. We spent many, many, many nights and days at this ballpark, and we've been very dedicated to it. And actually, my family is still dedicated to it, um, as of, um, still now. We still run the ba, uh, the concession stands, um, there and at Tanger. So, I say yeah. I don't know what to say. Thank y'all though very much for bringing this up for us. It's an honor, and I know Summer would be honored also.
Absolutely. Did we want to do some pictures or anything? Just communications. Nick, okay.
Alright, look at me right here. One, two, three. One more.
So I'd like to ask for a motion to approve this resolution. Got a motion from Commissioner Thomas, second from Commissioner Anglin. If there is no discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Go back to the agenda. The next presentation will be, uh, the ARPA funds by our financial director, David Smith.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, and the Henry County community. I'm basically going to rehash our ARPA plan for you. It's a presentation that I've done several times. It's now been updated, but I want to walk through a quick reminder of what this is all about. We were allocated $45.5 million from the Treasury Department. This is a one-time payment that will be received into installments. We've already received our first installment of $22.7 million, and our next installment is due in May of another $22.7 million. The reason why I bring that up is that our funds must be spent by December 31st, 2024, and I must do a report on our spending plan on April the 30th. So what are the eligible uses? Several different categories such as support public health response, to address negative economic impacts, to handle water and sewer infrastructure, and to replace revenue loss. This is a broader definition of those allowable use categories that are there. During this time, we had elicited our community, not only we did a survey, but we elicited for the community for requested projects. And that was both internal and external. This is a summary of those requests. I'm not able to see a lot from the screen, but I'm hoping that you have your presentation in your packet. And if you didn't, then I'll provide that to you. Where I've allocated those requests into the eligible project categories. The community themselves, they wanted to see us address public health, utilities, food, grants, as well as rent and mortgage assistance. So we took steps in financial services to develop a plan where we identified those eligible expenditures. We requested and evaluated projects, and then we prioritized those projects. This was the initial, uh, project request summary that we worked on several times to revise down to something that we could recommend that would address what both the community was recommending as well as our internal stakeholders. As you see from the survey results from the community, the food utility assistance from the business community, grants, they wanted grants. Even though this is too small to see on your screen, again, in your presentation package that I'll provide to you, was our recommendation that we developed in the broad categories of response to COVID-19 and its negative economic impact, public health, aid to impacted industries, loss of revenue. I'll just list a few, uh, for responding to COVID-19 impact. A superior court had requested a digitization contract. I'm going to need some program administration to administer the program. Under public health, we have the Department of Public Health made a request. MacIntosh Trail made a request, uh, Community Gardens, as well as the Sheriff's Office and our Parks and Recreation in Piedmont Henry. That's what you see in that category. We also had a request from the Speedway. which is our, one of our large economic generators here when they have races. In fact, they just had a second race in March and we've seen an uptick. We may see an uptick in our March and April revenues, sales tax revenues from that. We're allowed a standard allowance, that's what you see down at the bottom, for our revenue loss. We're going to take the standard allowance. There is amounts allocated for assistance to small businesses, assistance to households. I want to address the assistance to household category because in it, it provides from some level of affordable housing, not only for our regular residents, but also for our senior residents. And I don't know if we have representatives here tonight from Georgia communities, but they want an amount for, to address senior housing and the amount is listed there for that. I'm also recommending a cash assistance program similar to our adjoining communities in Fulton County, City of Atlanta, where they provide a direct assistance to families. They identify several different families, provide a cash stipend to them. Assistance to nonprofits is included here. Why are we doing that? Well, we had an assistance to nonprofit program. We also had an assistance to small business program. We're closing out those programs currently, not accepting any more applications. Use of ARPA funds would allow us to continue those programs. Included in broadband is here for water and sewer and broadband infrastructure, something for technology services. And from a prior meeting, we also have a stormwater recommendation of two and a half million. I've reserved an amount for district and county-wide eligible projects. That's the amount that you see there to use a total allocation of the forty-five point six million dollars that we've been allocated. Included in those projects, not only in the standard allowance, in those two amounts, we can do several things. We can include capital projects, we can include vehicles, we can include several different things. But I left the categories very, very broad in terms of the amounts. And these are my, from the group, financial services, what we're recommending you, we distribute the funds to. What questions do you have for me?
Oh, Commissioner Clemmons.
Back up, David. Can you explain the senior housing and who that is going to?
So I don't know if they're representatives from Georgia communities here.
They are.
I'll allow them to address that.
Can you come up and talk about that?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. Georgia Communities is a nonprofit organization who are assisting us in the development of a tax credit application for the development of multifamily housing specifically for seniors in our community. We do have individuals present and I'm certain they'll be happy to come up and answer any specific questions that you all may have. The particular property that we are looking at is located up Highway one fifty-five. The, do you all mind?
So Shannon, this is a private, I need, seven hundred, what are they doing? They're assisting us or we're assisting them?
It's kind of a combination, Commissioner. They are assisting us in preparing the application to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs as we are applying for tax credits to assist us in the development of this particular property for senior housing.
Is it going to be the county's property?
To the, I'll have to ask you to answer that one.
No, 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 this would be privately owned senior housing. And this will actually be the subject of a later part of the agenda where we'll explain the project in great detail, Kellytown Senior. But it is planned to have a mix of market rate, but also rents that are lower to benefit seniors in the county. Our nonprofit will, will own the asset and be the long-term, will develop it and be the long-term owner.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of organizations that do this. This is not a sole source then. So we, yeah, so David, I would definitely want to talk to you about this.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
I want to ask you a couple of questions. I did have the pleasure, Chair Harrell, of going to the facility and meeting with this group and seeing their work firsthand, spent a lot of time there, inside and out. This is the group that was introduced to me by Chair Harrell. And based upon that information, I wanted to take the time to see what they bring to a community. And the facilities are absolutely wonderful. I will say that, absolutely marvelous. You talked about the fact that this is for senior housing and you've been able to make sure the price points stay within a reasonable amount for seniors to afford. How do you make that happen? Can you tell us that?
Yeah, sure. It's, it's all done through the financing plan, which these are partially privately financed with conventional debt. But the way it's kept affordable for the majority of the units is to seek grant funding through programs like this, but also through the Department of Community Affairs to generate equity for the project in the form of a tax credits.
And will that continue? Is this a one-year thing? Will seniors have to worry the second year, the fifth year about the escalating prices of these units?
No, it's guaranteed to stay affordable and it's a measure of the, the area's median income. And so rents cannot be increased beyond the level of, of the income of the metro area. So for a thirty-year minimum period, by covenant, it must stay affordable with no changes.
Okay. And I noticed that, how long have your organization been doing this for the education of those who don't know about Georgia communities? How long has this organization been doing this?
Yeah, Georgia Communities has been in existence for about six years, but it was created by Paladin, Inc., who you'll hear about later down in the agenda. It's affiliated and directly formed by Paladin, Inc. that's been around for, since nineteen ninety-seven. So we've developed forty-plus similar communities, over two thousand units around the southeast.
And how many units would this particular proposal that you're looking to bring to District Four we're having it?
It would have seventy-two units.
Seventy-two units. Thank you.
And it's age restricted for individuals fifty-five and older.
And I will say to this board, when I went to visit this property, they're very spacious. One of the tenants there was excited to show me their unit. No, I want you to come see my unit. And I did and it was absolutely gorgeous. And I think this would be a positive for the community, especially for our senior citizens. We're talking about in Henry County, how we make sure that we have living space available for senior citizens that they can live in and be comfortable in and not feel compact like we put them to the side and gave them a box. This is not that. This is a beautiful living facilities with amenities built inside and outside and also medical services as well, that medical services can be provided on site for the seniors that are there. So with that matter, Chair, I, I'd like to put forth a. Well, I know that this particularly, this particular provider needs to move forward because of deadlines to work with government. And if they miss those dates, then Henry County cannot participate in the joint project. Am I correct, Ms. Shannon?
There is a deadline for the Georgia Department of Community Affairs application, yes ma'am. There is, as he mentioned, there is a specific agenda item later on. This particular agenda item is financial services. So Georgia Communities will actually be coming back before you for the item that they do have on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Then I can wait for that time period.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any other questions for David?
Yes.
David, so tonight, this is your presentation discussion and it comes back to us for recommendations or?
So this is for presentation. I'm hoping that you've received it in your packet. This, this is the recommendation of financial services and the county manager team. I'm open to changes and suggestions so that when I bring it back, we can have a vote to move forward with distributing funding to the various organizations that, that need the funding.
Okay. So one of the things that I would be very concerned and would need additional information on is the fact that you have allocated three point five million for Piedmont Hospital. And I know that the federal government has allocated one hundred and seventy-eight billion dollars for the hospital industry and that's billion with a B. And I do know that Piedmont is strong enough to go after those dollars there. So I would like more information, discussion among this group as to what we should give to Piedmont Henry if, if, if we should do anything directly. I am concerned about the fact that there are other things that we need to fix as far as infrastructure for Henry County. I'm looking for the line for the racetrack. And I'm concerned about, again, for discussion, that we've allocated those funds for the racetrack and help them rejuvenate their surfaces. When I know that we have some services in the county that we need to rejuvenate first and I know there's another infrastructure issue that Commissioner wants to talk to us about as well and I need more information about it as well. So I'm going to hold on those two major concerns that I have and bring it to the attention that I would need more information on before I could really say that I would not question it if it came back again. And we definitely have to put some definitions on some of these things. If we, if we decide that we're giving things to these different areas, then each one of these areas need to be, and I'm assuming they will, send you some type of report as to what those and how those funds will be used so we can have accountability there as well. And I say that because I do see you have a constitutional officer here and when you turn those budgets, that goes to that constitutional officer to do exactly as they see fit. But I'm hoping they will follow the plan and want to make sure that you've built in something for accountability as well from those areas as well. It's good to see that you do have the monies allocated by the five districts because there are some economic development projects that we need to look at by district as well. And with that, I will be quiet for the moment.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Can you go back to that slide, David, again?
Well, I, I'll go back to that slide, but I'm presenting this slide because it does define the several projects that are there. And in a prior presentation, I did include a definition of what those requests were.
Yeah, this one right here, and I'll show you what's not included on the other one. Yeah, when you went over to this one, I just wanted, I know that the chair already spoke with you about that the Henry County Water Authority is not on this one or infrastructure is not on this one either. So when you bring it back, we could just make sure that's added on there. And then the Parks and Rec, I would ask that JP would go back, look at the parking lots, the fields, paving in our parks, fields that are dirt roads in our parks, parking lots that are dirt in our parks, and make sure that we ask for money to pave with our handicap and bring them up to ADA in all of the parks because five hundred thousand dollars is not near enough when we're giving out this much money to other organizations and we've not addressed the Parks and Rec. So that's seven hundred and twenty-three thousand that we're looking at for senior housing for a private organization that we don't even know what the land is, whether it's zoned properly or not zoned properly. The modification hasn't come to force. There's too much involved, but that's one pot that I see that can move to Parks and Rec. So I really would like for you to take a look at that because I think when David started, he talked about the survey that was done of what the citizens wanted to see. Number one was public health and the other ones were things that would fall under our Parks, Recs and senior centers. So I think we need to go back and address that.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments?
So Madam Chair, I may. We, we've got to bring some closure to this because David has to report to the feds on the funding. We have already received almost twenty-four million dollars that's sitting in our account that we've got to expend. And I know David has presented to this board at least on three occasions, the ARPA funding. One of the things that the board asked us to do was to bring back each project and place it in a category based on the eligibility, which is what we've done. So tonight, it may take us some time, but we need to know specifically if there are projects that we can move forward with because there is a dire need for us to expend those funds. David, if you don't mind, go back to the slide that indicates the allowable uses of recovery funds because there are very specific categories that we can utilize the funding for. Support public health response, replace public sector revenue loss, water and sewer infrastructure, address negative economic impacts, premium pay for essential workers and broadband infrastructure. What our staff has done is taken every request that has come in and categorized it based under those categories. So if there are specific projects that we need to work towards, that may not be ARPA eligible. It may be something that we need to consider under our capital, under our general fund budget as, as it pertains to that particular department. But I cannot, we've got to make a decision tonight specifically on that initial twenty-four million dollars. I know this was set up for discussion only, but we do need for the board to give us some guidance on this. We've asked, I don't think we've received any information outside of the commissioners that have reached out. I know Commissioner Wilson specifically wanted us to look at fire hydrants within District One. One of the things that David did do is set aside funding for each district. So if you have district projects that fall within those categories, then those would be eligible projects. But right now, we've got to make a decision on what we can and can't do. And what I'm hearing from the board, or at least I've heard from Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Clemmons is that you need more information on the Georgia communities. So that's something that we won't consider. You need more details in terms of Piedmont Henry or Atlanta Motor Speedway, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Commissioner Thomas. But we need to move forward with this. What I'm afraid of is that when that second pot of money is released to the county at the end of this, at the end of May, they're going to ask us, what have you expended thus far? And they're not going to continue to give us money if we're not spending it. Keep in mind, the whole point was COVID recovery. And so we've got to put the funds back into the nonprofits, the communities, economic development, infrastructure and broadband. And we've presented a good list of projects that we deem appropriate and eligible under this funding category. So although we're not taking action on this tonight, we need the authority to be able to move forward with the funding, with the understanding that if there are particular groups that you'd like for us to bring back additional information and maybe have a representative from that group present to present, we can do that. But I am respectfully asking that this board allow us to proceed with at least the categories that are eligible and that we've determined to be eligible based on the criteria that has been set by the federal government in terms of eligible projects. Yes, sir.
Putting a aquaponics facility at the Fairview Library, but I don't see it on the list. And it looks like it can go under a public health response.
It can, yes, sir.
So I would like to add a half million dollars for aquaponics.
Okay, Commissioner Clemmons.
You said a half a million, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay.
I recognize Commissioner Clemmons.
One of the things that Commissioner Thomas said was that once you give the money to the organizations, they can use it however. Hold on. So even with, and I'm using this as an example, even if we give five point two to Atlanta Motor Speedway or to Parks and Rec, and I'm just using those two as an example, it would be helpful if everybody that you've recommended, that you put it up under these six categories and tell us what they're going to do with it and how it makes it an allowable use based on this project. So for instance.
Go back to the list, David.
The, the very first one that they submitted. That one, like, go back. Yeah, that one.
That was the initial list.
Yeah.
That's not the list that, I mean, I think some of those areas have been cut.
Correct.
David, can you go to the slide that shows the requested project and it gives a description of the request? That one, yes.
This is the project list with the description.
So recovery and revital, revitalization plan is not really specific. What is that? What are they using it for?
Look up the request.
Go up under the definition.
Sheriff Office is requesting surveillance upgrade.
That's going to be broadband, so that's, that's, that's good.
Henry County Water Authority.
Water and sewer, we know that's allowable.
Stormwater.
That's allowable.
Parks and Rec broadband.
allowable.
Motor Speedway recovery and revitalization plan.
What is that? Well, see, that doesn't go, but again, I thought that was two and I was okay with that, but that doesn't fall under. That, that doesn't meet the criteria.
Does that meet your criteria?
Parking lots?
It does.
So parking lots.
To respond to your initial statement pertaining to can they use the funds any way they can, that's inaccurate. There's a compliance requirement for how, making certain that these funds are being. There's a compliance requirement for how, making certain that these funds are being used with an eligible use. There has to be a program, for their program, there has to be measurable outcomes that have to be measured. Wherever those monies go, making certain they go to the right places. And that's why I also requested on the list subsequent, a program administration amount because I'm going to need someone to make certain that they are monitoring these programs where they have to provide on a monthly, then quarterly basis, reports to us because as a county, we have to report to the Treasury what we're doing with these monies on a monthly and quarterly basis and on our sub recipients as well.
So it can be used for parking lots?
So infrastructure is an eligible use. Parking lot is a capital project.
So I would like to see Parks and Rec go back.
For the Speedway, it's primarily an economic engine, an economic development for us. And so it addresses the negative economic impact that they had when, during the COVID crisis, they weren't in operation. And just until this year, they were able to add the second race where we began to see a recovery.
I agree.
Commissioner Thomas?
Okay, so I'm going back now. When I first started, I thought you said this was discussion, but you need us to make a decision. So, Madam Chair, I'm assuming you're going to entertain motions for approval. Is that where we are? I'm trying to determine, what are we doing? Sherri said we need to make decisions for her tonight so he can make, do his report. So my question is, Madam Chair, are we entertaining motions tonight or we going through discussion and presentations tonight?
I need to get some clarity from the county manager with regards to what her request is.
Okay.
So this is a discussion item only.
We do need for the board to take some form of action just to not, at the next meeting, to say we agree with the list or we don't agree with the list. There is nothing that requires our board to approve a list of projects because you all have already accepted the funds. But because there's been a lot of questions raised in terms of what we're spending the funds on, we committed to bring back to this board a recommendation on how we think those funds needed to be expended. But this is a discussion item only, and there is not a resolution for you all to act on this tonight.
Okay, so I have a question, one other question, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas and then Commissioner Anglin.
Madam Chair, I do want to position us where we can be supportive of the Georgia community projects. So my question is, since it's on this list, am I able to make a motion for that one so they will not miss their deadline? Do they have to come back to the next meeting? What's the function on that?
So Chair Harrell, because you set the agenda, you have the ability to amend the agenda to add the resolution, but this is a discussion item today.
Okay.
So it is not an item for the board to take action on.
Okay, so let me hear from Commissioner Anglin.
All I was going to say is that we go ahead and give David the permission to go ahead and send funds to those projects that are strictly county projects at this time.
Commissioner Wilson?
On the Water Authority, you had $6.5 million. That correct?
That was their initial request. It does not show up as a recommended item. What I did was I set aside an amount for a water and sewer in the water and sewer and broadband category for those small projects that commissioners may have need of because the Water and Sewer Authority's request of $6.5 million included several different projects. One of those projects we had already included in our assigned fund balance amount.
So reading I ask, we have the opportunity to use the Water Authority for extending our water lines to the taxpayers that's been paying a two-mill water tax all these years without a benefit. And I don't know what that price tag is countywide. We did a, we did kind of a price tag on several roads. I think it was 1.5, but that's not all the roads in District One without water. If we extend these water lines to where the people have been paying a two-mill water tax to get the benefit from, also they'll have fire hydrants to where they can get a reduction in the homeowner's insurance. So if this board chooses to use that countywide because there are roads from North End County all the way down to the South that don't have water on and fire hydrants.
Excuse me, Commissioner Holmes.
So, if we can, I don't know how long it's going to take for the Water Authority to price that out, but it's going to be more than $1.5 million because if we're looking at countywide, I think we had a, we had forty-some-odd miles of roads without water. And they was going to look just in my district. But I think countywide, we need to take the opportunity of this money to extend these water lines to everybody that's, that lives in areas without water.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
I totally agree with Commissioner Wilson. I mean, it's not too often that you get free money from the federal government, and instead of giving the money away, we're at the point now where we need to make the necessary investments in our infrastructure, and I think sewer should be number one on that, on that list. So I totally agree with you.
I think also with regards to water and sewer, if they're collecting the two mill, then they need to be reinvesting that two mill back into the county, and it should not be just our responsibility to come up with all of the funding for water and sewer. They're collecting the two mill. They need to be reinvesting the two mill back into every district that they're collecting from. Commissioner Tom, Clemens?
I agree, Chair Harrell, and I think that it's a partnership, and the county has to come with something. And so I'm glad that you've had the experience. You know they do. I think this 6.4 million to the water and sewer doesn't come out of our fund balance. It comes out of federal dollars that we can really use, and I would like to see that at the top of the list along with whatever else David recommends as countywide, but that water sewer should be at the top. We've got businesses that are shutting down because they don't have sewer, and they're pumping waste out of a truck. And Henry County is too large, and we've grown too much to be having these type of issues. So I think that should be number one as well. Thanks, Commissioner Wilson.
Okay, so David, can you go back to the slide with the list, please? So we know that the Superior Court needs digitization. Can we agree upon that? Okay, all right. Technology Services need money to make sure that our technology is working. Can we agree on that?
Yep.
Okay. I'm not really sure about the broadband. Can you expound a little bit on the broadband?
So there was a state grant for broadband that I worked with our technology director in making application to the state to receive broadband funds. We did that in partnership with AT&amp;T. Well, we submitted it on our own because we had received a request from AT&amp;T for, to participate with us in doing that and provide them with ARPA funds. The presentation from AT&amp;T pretty much was 70/30 or 20/80, where we were taking on 80% of the cost to provide broadband to 90, up to 100% of the people that didn't have broadband. We believe that that should have been switched and that we should continue down the path of providing, if we do do a partnership with AT&amp;T, that we provide a lesser percentage because AT&amp;T would then be able to charge their customers and make more of a profit than we are earning, we're earning nothing on that amount. So in terms of the participation level, it should have been reversed, where we would provide something, provide broadband to our residents here in Henry County that don't have it, up to 100 megabytes per second, but at a lower cost than AT&amp;T wanted to provide to us. And that's how I arrived at the amount that's there for broadband, participating with AT&amp;T.
Okay, so can we come back and revisit that one? Because I'd just like to get a little bit more clarity on that one with regards to stormwater. Uh huh, it is.
You skipped Parks and Rec.
Oh, okay, Parks and Rec. Can, I know that Commissioner Clemens has made a request for JP to go back and do an assessment of all of our parks to maybe come up with a more realization, a better number than the half million. So if we can get that, we do want to move forward with some of the, what, I say, let's move forward with the half million, and then we can address additional cost at a later time. But we do want to move forward with the Parks and Rec. Stormwater, can you tell me what those projects are?
So for...
Is Alex coming forward? Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice, and members of the commission. This line item is to request funding to initiate a countywide floodplain analysis that it is calibrated, is based on the ASBILD information, and is as delicate and accurate to 100 acre in basins. And what this does is it give us a very accurate scenario of where we have flooding, which homes are in floodplain, which homes are not. Because currently, there are homes that they do pay flood insurance, but they're not. And there are homes that they don't have any flood insurance, but they are in floodplain. And for us, as a county which permits these construction plans, we have to have a very sound information to judge and regulate. And also, this would put us in line with our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, NPDES. Also, it provides us with a community rating system. Currently, we are providing 10% flood insurance discount. This could push us all the way up to 35% discount for our citizens. We can provide free elevation certificates to our citizens that, right now, they have to pay more than $1,200 out of pocket. So all of these is benefits that it goes back and it brings us very up to par to the state of the art as far as the permitting process goes, our monitoring, our asset management, and our short-term and long-term budgeting, and also leveraging this against stormwater utility fee to be eligible for grants from federal government to handle a lot of the issues that we may have as form of floodplain.
And I remember when you brought this before the board, and I remember Commissioner Clemens asking us to use ARPA funds to do this. So can we get an agreement that we will move forward with stormwater getting their amount? Okay.
Thank you.
We have the Department of Public Health, and I think that that is important because that is one of our responsibilities as a board is to make sure that we fund our public health. So are we in agreement with the Department of Public Health receiving the funds? Okay. And then one of the other things here is that I want to make sure that where it has the district-wide eligibility projects, can we agree?
I'm sorry, Commissioner? I just want to, if you will, go back to the McIntosh Trail.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
And the reason for that we don't have, you know, a mental health hospital in Henry County yet. I'm working on it, though, Madam Chair.
Okay, all right.
But we don't have one yet, and we've needed their services.
Okay, all right. So can we agree to fund the McIntosh Trail for the mental health? Okay. And then for the district, for all of the commissioners to receive funding for eligible projects that are in their district, can we agree on that?
Yes.
So it'll be five districts?
I'm sorry?
Can we specify projects?
No, I'm going to let you all do that for those projects.
Yeah, that's what I'm telling you about.
As long as they meet the eligibility requirement.
As long as they meet the eligibility, but that's going to be up per district.
Yeah, I'm just interested in aquaponics for the local schools.
Okay, okay. All right, and then, and you have one other?
One other question. David mentioned that he needed that program administration. Is that that line, David, there for program administration to help manage these different? Is that that line, is there another line?
So the program administration is for me to add or hire additional staff that would be grant-funded from ARPA over this three-year timeframe. So it's being spread out over the three-year timeframe. My current department, just to run my current department, is approximately $2 million. And this is going to require not only someone with tremendous grant administration experience, it's also going to require software to monitor compliance and to audit.
Agree for the program administration? Okay. This is to get us started. Okay? And then we can look at what's left over and look at what projects that are left over.
But Chair Harrell, you didn't put the $6 million for the Water Authority because it's not on the list.
Okay, yeah, okay. Is, what is the amount for the, do we have an amount for the Western Parallel Parkway?
They didn't give me an amount from the Water Authority. They just listed overall several different projects that totaled 6.4 million, but I can request that from them.
Projects on 81 and 20, was those in yours? Okay, okay. Okay, so can we put those projects from the Water Authority on there?
It's the whole, Chair Harrell, I just want to make sure we have clarity. Johnny, you said the whole six because that covers the entire county, right?
That covers the projects. Can we list the projects that were on there?
I have the Water Authority project with...
Okay, you got, yeah. Can I see that? Can you read that, Johnny? Okay, so is the...
I don't know if it's been updated. That's about two months old.
The Water Authority submitted was the Western Parallel Connector Waterline Extension, the Western Parallel Connector Sanitary Sewer Extension, Highway 20 West Loop, and Highway 81 GST Supply Line. Those were the four projects that were submitted by the Water Authority. I think what we understood from the board is that we are going to go back and ask them to submit additional projects to make sure that water and sewer coverage starts at the north end and goes to the south end. So they will need to provide some additional projects for consideration because I think I heard from you all, you want infrastructure to be one of the key priority projects that we do provide funding for.
But Sherri, if you also, to address Commissioner Holmes, there's also a $2 million that's set aside in fund balance specifically Commissioner Holmes for infrastructure, and I think we can have Chair Harrell to move that to the north, to specifically state that's for the north end of the county.
Is that good with you, Commissioner Holmes, to move that?
We have to determine the cost and the scope of the project.
So can we, we can work on getting the cost for that? Would that be okay?
Sounds good.
So we have some projects.
And money left, so we get the north sewer.
So Sherri, do I need to put this in, are you saying we just need to, not saying that these are the projects that we want to move forward with?
I am clear in terms of the eligible projects. This was for discussion only.
Okay.
And so we are clear. So David has his marching orders. We are clear in terms of where we can allocate funding. I think the groups that you all did not identify will need to bring those back in the form of a resolution for the board to authorize any funding that we allocate for Piedmont, Atlanta Motor Speedway, and any other groups that were not listed. But as I understand it, anything that is directly county-related and infrastructure-related, we are moving forward with it.
In the sheriff's office.
In the sheriff's office. And then we are, I think, for Commissioner Holmes...
Because there is a medical contract. They do have to provide medical service for inmates, so...
Right, and I just wanted to, for the record, to make sure we include the aquaponics piece that Commissioner Holmes, because that would be an eligible expense.
Right, for the record.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, I'm clear.
And JP, the Parks and Rec and the Senior Centers, even though we all mask and we're out of all this stuff, we still need to use the facilities and upgrade those facilities to make sure that we have what we need in those facilities. I'm really concerned about the ADA and people being able to get in and out of parking lots. If we can use it for infrastructure, that's infrastructure. Because there's money left. We didn't do 24 million, so...
Now, Chair Harrell, I know you all specified specific county. At the beginning of the presentation, there was a lot of conversation about Georgia communities. What would you all like to do with that?
That's not county. And I'll tell you, Chair Harrell, I have a concern about that property. I would like a full presentation on how that property is zoned now. Does it have to come back to be modified to get this? And so we can, we'll be issuing money, and then I don't have any information on the zoning of that property, where the property is, um, what's already going there? Does it have to be rezoned to get this housing? There's a lot of questions, um, in reference to it, so.
I can yield to some of that.
So, Commissioner, that is a part of the modification that's on the agenda for tonight. So, given that this is for discussion only, what we can do, because we are modifying the zoning conditions, and Nancy, you're gonna have to help me think through this as I say it. Because we are modifying the zoning conditions, we can add a condition for us to create some form of a development agreement between the county and the applicant. Within that development agreement, if we want to specify funding for them, I think that that would be the cleanest way to do it, because this is, again, a discussion item. And I think they need an answer, if I understand from staff, there is a deadline for them, um, in terms of funding. I think we can, through a development agreement, help me, Nancy. So we could bring back a- Okay. So that's doable. We, yeah, that's doable.
So we're gonna move forward so far with countywide projects that we've named. And, um, David, uh, we'll, we'll, um, you get that total added up, and then we'll see what we have left.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Alright, so, uh, we don't prolong this and any further. Um, we're gonna move forward with the, um, the McIntosh Trail Community Service Board Resolution approving reappointment of retired Judge James Chafin, four nineteen, uh, twenty-twenty-two through four nineteen twenty-five. Uh, I'd like to, uh, call for a motion. Got a motion from Commissioner Anglin. Can I get a second? From Commissioner Wilson, is there any discussion? Having none, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carries. And then we'll move forward with our consent agenda.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. Um, this is your consent, consent agenda for Tuesday, April nineteenth, six thirty P.M. The first item is Department of Transportation. We have a resolution authorizing the chair and/or county manager to sign all utility easements needed for road construction. Under Leisure Services, we have a resolution awarding bid number twenty-two dash forty-four to Barfield Hope Construction for the purchase of ADA upgrades to Warren Holder Park in the amount of one fifty-seven seven seventy-four, using funds from the Capital Improvement Fund. We also have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners declaring a Whitney Piano at Ten Cleveland Street in Locust Grove, Georgia, um, as surplus. We also have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners declaring this golf baskets at Wendy Hill Maintenance Facility located at one hundred Runney Stewart Drive as surplus. Under SPOST, we have a resolution approving an award for design services of Bill Gardner Parkway Widening to Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc., in the amount of two million sixty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. We have a resolution approving an award of a design service for intersection improvements of McDonough Parkway at Henry Parkway to Heath and Limeback Engineers in the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Under Stormwater, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving an annual contract to inspect county-owned dams to Geologic LLC from Marietta, Georgia, for the following rates: individual dam inspection, two hundred and fifty dollars; engineer of record inspection, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars; and engineer of record technical assistance hourly rate of a hundred and eighty dollars. Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
I'd like to call for a motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, motion carries?
Thank you.
Okay. We had that. Resolution to approve and adopt the Henry County Employee Benefits and Medical Insurance Plan for twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-three. Harrell?
Good evening, Madam Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Distinguished Board Members. We come before you today to present a resolution to adopt our employee benefits and medical insurance plans for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. I have with me Mr. James Ford from the Epic Insurance Brokers and Consulting Firm, as well as our insurance broker, Mr. Mike Gases from the Gases Agency. There were seven requests for proposals submitted by various insurance companies. These proposals were from the following: Aetna, Allied, Anthem, Humana, United Healthcare, Delta Dental, Dental, and IMED. When we looked at the best options for our employees, we thought that a hybrid approach would be the best approach and the best plan options for our employees. This hybrid approach, we're recommending is the self-funded proposal from United Healthcare, which will be a two-point-six percent decrease in expected costs, and a renewal of the incumbent Kaiser with an expected twelve percent increase in expected costs. But when we look at the total financial impact of this hybrid plan, the dollar amount is three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. As it relates to Dental and Vision, Delta Dental is offering a premium rate that we currently have with our incumbent, with a guaranteed rate of three years, meaning no movement, no increases in rates for the next three years. So that, that's a plus. Also, in reference to IMED, they're offering the same type of plan with a four-year guarantee and no rate change. As it relates to life insurance and disability insurance, the Standard Insurance Company will match current life insurance rates of the incumbent equitable. And since we're in a multi-year rate guarantee with New York Life, there is no renewal on disability line of coverage at this time. I want to thank you all for taking time out of your busy schedules and meeting with us prior to tonight, and we plan on doing the same in an effort to be transparent with our employees, starting as early as tomorrow and Thursday, and all the way through the open enrollment process, so that they can fully understand the, uh, plans and the options and the coverages. I'll yield for questions at this time.
Okay. No questions from the board, uh, I'd like to call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, can I get a second? Second, Commissioner Thomas. There any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Thank you.
Any opposed, motion carries? Planning and zoning, MC dash twenty-two dash zero-two, Paladin Inc. of Atlanta requesting modification to zoning conditions for property located on the east side of Highway one fifty-five North, south of Kellytown Road. Who's presenting this?
Give us one second, please, ma'am.
Good evening, Chair, Board Members, and citizens of Henry County. The modification request in front of you is for property located at three four eight two to three four one six, Highway one fifty-five North. The property is currently zoned mixed-use, and the applicant is requesting to modify conditions on RZ nineteen twenty-one to allow senior independent living as a permitted use. The subject property is highlighted in green on the map and is surrounded by RA and low-density residential properties. This site plan shows a conceptual drawing of the proposed senior independent living building. This concept includes seventy-two living units and one hundred and fourteen parking stalls. The applicant is requesting to modify conditions for RZ nineteen twenty-one, Resolution Number twenty dash one three five, to allow senior independent living as a permitted use. Assisted living facilities are already allowed as a use. However, the applicant is requesting that senior living facilities be spelled out clearly on the resolution. Um, again, this property was rezoned back in twenty nineteen from RA to MU, mixed-use, and conditions, uh, five and six specifically spell out assisted living facilities. We're just adding independent senior living to make it clear. We did receive an email of opposition from Ms. Dorothy Allen Green. And I'm not sure if she's here or not, but that email just detailed some of her concerns. Staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request to modify conditions five and six of the original Resolution Number two twenty dash one three five, to include independent senior living as an allowed use. We're also adding another condition, ten, um, that will read, "A development agreement will be drafted between the county and the developer." And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Well, this is a public hearing. Uh, persons wishing to speak in favor of the request, including the applicant, uh, will have a collective total of ten minutes to address the board. And those in opposition of the request will likewise have ten minutes collectively. Do you have anyone, just including the applicant, that'd like to come forward, uh, to speak on this project?
Well, good evening again. Uh, my name is Joe Columns, Vice President for Paladin Inc. I have with me, uh, Phil Ellen, who's, uh, our, our president for the last twenty years. Uh, this is affiliated with another nonprofit, Georgia Communities, Inc., that you heard about earlier. Um, been around since nineteen ninety-seven, uh, highly experienced in the type of development we'll present tonight. Um, we've developed over forty of these, we own them for the long term, these are not developed and flipped. Uh, we, we care a lot about what happens in these communities, uh, and we have around two thousand-plus units. Um, we often, uh, partner with, with counties, uh, like this, that are not given sufficient funding to address housing crises, uh, to come up with creative collaborative solutions for housing that matters for their constituents. And, uh, as our company has, has aged, uh, we are serving, uh, aged individuals more and more. Senior independent living, uh, has become such a crisis throughout the state, uh, and especially in the metro Atlanta area, that when we sit down with counties about where the need is, we, we often hear, how can we get more, uh, independent senior living, more senior housing that seniors can, uh, can afford? Can afford, especially in this, uh, context of inflation, to, um, uh, afford, um, their medical care and, and all the things in their life, uh, with housing costs ballooning. So, we focus on, on building quality communities that, uh, benefit the surrounding community and neighborhoods, but also serve, uh, of this housing crisis. Um, we're in Cherokee County, uh, currently, uh, set, set to close and about to build. Um, Clayton County and Forest Park, an active site under construction. Uh, Commissioner Thomas was kind enough to tour, um, our Grove Gardens at East Lake Facility in DeKalb County, where we have over a two-thousand-person, uh, waiting list. And it just, uh, for the property's sake, that's nice, but it shows there is not nearly enough senior independent living, uh, to serve, um, seniors who are aging. And often, the profile of who we serve is a person who's no longer able, uh, to manage and care for a single-family home. Um, but they also are not in need or ready to transition to a very intense living environment like a nursing home, like assisted living. Uh, they want to live independently, and they want to stay in their communities. And that's what we focus on, is in, is this independent senior living, uh, concept for seniors. Uh, the, the parcel, uh, I, I think you all, I'm sure, are very familiar with this twenty-two-acre site at Kellytown Road and Highway one fifty-five. This is, uh, the concept plan, not from us, but I believe it was presented a couple of years ago through the rezoning process, and I just wanted to show it. Phase one is, is very active, uh, with the Publix Shopping Center. And as part of the rezoning to mixed-use, the entire twenty-two-acre parcel was rezoned to mixed-use, and we are focused on the phase-two area outlined in yellow there. Uh, that's a six-point-nine acre, six-point-nine-eight acre area, um, mixed-use. Um, it is my understanding that it allows for, uh, multifamily up to sixteen units per acre. Uh, that would be a hundred and ten units. Uh, for this particular parcel, the, the, um, restrictions are that it be, uh, assisted living, but it also could be a number of other commercial uses. Uh, what we are proposing, as you heard earlier, is a smaller concept. Uh, we believe that fits this area, uh, better and is more appropriate. It's seventy-two units. Uh, it would not have other commercial, uh, components that, uh, would likely generate traffic, um, and, and other things, uh, that would be more intense than just the seventy-two units, uh, for seniors. We are very excited about the possibilities for serving seniors at this site. Uh, it would, uh, have a lot of pedestrian connections. Uh, for seniors to have walking access to a grocery store and a pharmacy and a doctor's office is a game changer. Um, and it allows them to live independently and stay out of nursing homes, uh, for much longer. And so we think this is ideally, really, an ideal situation to have senior independent living. Uh, we'll also have a lot of features to promote healthy lifestyles. Um, we'll have, uh, we're proposing a, a bus stop, so that seniors who are no longer able to drive can get around the county, um, because they, they are active, uh, and will be taken care of themselves largely. Uh, I did want to, uh, sort of illustrate visually the difference, um, in independent senior living and what it looks and feels like, um, and, and talk about how it is distinguished, uh, from assisted living in some ways. These are, uh, properties we've developed, um, all in the metro Atlanta area, but you'll, uh, you'll notice there's, uh, there's a lot of walkways, it's high-quality, it's meant to last, uh, for a long time. Um, uh, it also has a lot of exterior gathering areas, because community is extremely important, uh, to seniors. Uh, inside, in independent senior living, it is very much targeted and geared, uh, for seniors. Its fifty-five and older will be the restriction for at least thirty years, but the reality is, uh, the people we serve are average age of seventy-five. They're much, uh, they're much older on average. Um, but we'll have things, uh, like fitness areas. Uh, we have a lot of ample community space, uh, community kitchen, um, where events are held, uh, bingo nights, a lot of activities to help seniors feel connected, engaged to their peers. Uh, we also have a cyber café, uh, seniors handle their business, um, uh, just like the rest of the world, often online, and need access, uh, to those amenities. One thing that has really been important for us is to have a wellness suite. Uh, this is where we'll partner with a local agency, and we'll work with the county on that, um, to come in and do health screenings. We often do, uh, um, medical, uh, trainings and educational seminars, again, all to help early detect signs of more serious problems, uh, with the goal of helping, uh, these seniors, uh, live in their homes for a longer amount of time. Uh, in the unit itself, I just wanted to mention a couple of things of how it, uh, is a little different than assisted living, per se. Uh, you'll see a full kitchen. Uh, these seniors will, uh, will cook for themselves, uh, as opposed to assisted living that has maybe a commercial kitchen component where meals are provided on-site. That's not how, uh, independent senior, uh, living would work. But you do see, um, there's a shot of the bathroom there that has some of the features that seniors often need: grab bars, um, no-step shower entry, um, room underneath, uh, sinks, uh, in case someone is, uh, confined to a wheelchair. Uh, again, all to, uh, accommodate seniors' unique living, uh, situations. Um, and, and finally, just to close, uh, with the, uh, the modification request, this has been approved for, uh, assisted living. All we're asking is that you consider, uh, the, the benefit potentially, uh, to your constituents of expanding the definition to independent, to include independent senior living, uh, as well. Um, this is intended to, to help them live, uh, a- a- affordably. We're targeting there will be, uh, a certain percentage, uh, market units, but we're- But we're hoping that the vast majority of these units will be set around six-hundred to nine-hundred dollars per month. For a facility of this quality, if you compare that to what is paid in a nursing home or assisted living, it's dramatically lower. And that's not subsidized, that's not Section Eight housing, per se. This is, are seniors that are paying the rent, and they just, they desperately need a lower-rate option. And that's what our nonprofit seeks to do. In terms of the discussion earlier about the funds, the ARPA funds, I do wish I had the chance to present this information before that. And I'm sorry that that was likely, put you on the spot. We didn't intend for that to be the case. But that, those funds would directly help lower the conventional debt required to finance the property and would go towards helping us reduce rental rates for the seniors that live there. So, we're, I know this is the modification component, but we do appreciate and would love to share more information about that request as well. Thank you, and glad to help answer any questions.
Okay. If you could just give us a moment, this is a public hearing. And if there is anyone else willing, wanting to come and speak in favor of the project, please come forward. If not, if there is someone here that is, wants to speak in opposition of the project, please come forward. And Joe, if you would just step to the side and let those that are here to speak in opposition, please come forward, state your name and address. And again, you have a collective of ten minutes to speak.
Okay. So, my name is Billy Russell. I live nearby, just down the road. Do you need my address? Is that what you said?
State your name and your address.
Okay, address is one oh five Ashland Ridge. I'm not really in opposition to it. I have concerns about the way it's designed. Old Kellytown, the road that this comes off of, is a little bit smaller road. And where it intersects with Kellytown is a little bit smaller intersection that is already, at certain times of day, difficult to get in and out of. Traffic on Kellytown can sometimes block Old Kelly, getting off of Old Kellytown pretty badly. And we're concerned that if they're adding, what, seventy units and a hundred and forty parking spots, that's just going to increase the traffic quite a bit and will make getting in and out of the road for those of us who live there even harder. And, you know, we just want to make sure that we brought that concern forward and let everybody know to make sure that those, you know, are taken into account when this is looked at.
Mike Harrod, I'm at six seventy-six Kibby Road, which is straight across from where you saw an exit from the proposal. And one of the things, we wouldn't want any kind of exit on Old Kellytown just because of the way the road is, and especially a four-way. There's no sightline. I guess DOT would have to check it up, but there's not a far sightline coming south off of there. And like I say, we're not opposed to assisted living. And we've only had a week lead time. I don't think the agenda was even put out till last Tuesday. And there was nothing about, no pictures of the independent senior living. And you see that, and you got three- and four-story buildings, which, I mean, if we could've got that out to the community, there would've been a lot more opposition here, I'm sure. Now, you know, we had a big, hard-fought battle for the mixed-use zoning and the Publix and everything. And part of that, and part of the concessions you gave us were the modifications, you know, to the conditions. And, you know, now you're wanting to back out on that promise that you made. So, that's kind of hard to take. There's the sightlines. Yeah, one of the modifications is keeping trucks off of Old Kellytown. But, I mean, the loading dock behind the new Publix, and there's an exit on right there. I don't know how we're going to keep that, but that's a, that's a different thing. Yeah, nobody would want anything over two stories. And I know it hasn't been proposed to your desk yet, but the site to the right where the barn and the horse pasture is, you know, the owner of that property's already planning on a big subdivision. So, it's just going to add to the congestion of that whole area. And I guess that's all we got. But like I say, nobody is, you know, everybody agreed and was happy to have an assisted facility. You think of that, you think of, you know, like a one level that blends into the environment. But, yeah, independent living is like townhomes or apartments, you know, three or four stories high. And we're just against that. Thank you.
Anyone else wanting to speak in opposition of this project?
Yes. Okay. Joe, if you could come back up to the microphone. I do have, I know myself and Commissioner Thomas have a couple of comments or questions. This is a DCA project, Department of Community Affairs project. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Tax credit project. So, this is for senior citizens fifty-five and older.
That's right.
And by being a tax credit project, it is income-based. Is that correct?
That's right. For all but ten percent of the units, there will be income verification to make sure it's serving the seniors who need it most.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you. I'm going to repeat some of the things you said, just for the record, okay? Not so much of the question, but I do want it to be noted. All the different amenities that he noted and being recorded becomes a part of the record of what we're looking for in this facility, okay? And one of the things he talked about, all the bathrooms be equipped for seniors, meaning they will have the grab handles and other different attachments that's needed for seniors. And we saw a picture of that. We couldn't see a picture of the elevator, but elevators will be provided where it's needed for seniors to get from one level to the next. We did see a picture of a common meeting area for seniors that's equipped beyond just tables and chairs, but also has a complimentary area where seniors can have different events in as well. We saw a medical care area as well that will be a part of the facility that seniors will have access to. Another thing that we talked about was the green space outside, that you were adding green space and covered areas that seniors can congregate outside on the covered areas. Ten-feet sidewalks that would go from the facility to the shopping area, I think, would be very, very important. Because some of our seniors have those little motor cars that they like to go to and fro shopping. So, I'd like for you to make sure that you have at least ten feet-wide side streets going from the facility to the public shopping area. And this area is designed where this facility complements the public shopping area that's coming over. It's going to be absolutely gorgeous, that they can go from one place, have their doctors on that particular area and get to and fro. But we need to make sure that those sidewalks are in place. We talked about the fact that they will have a exercise facility inside with more than one piece of equipment, with several pieces of equipment specifically designed for seniors as well. We need a lighting plan added to your plan from the Publix or from the shopping center to the facility, at least. So that if some of them are traveling at night, going to and fro for dinner or going to and fro to shop, they need a specific lighting plan for them. And sometimes those are the lights that are in the ground. I don't know what you call them, but they light up the pathway and makes it for easy travel. Let me see here. Trying to read my notes. I think we got that. I just wanted to make sure that we're putting some of these things into our document.
So, Commissioner?
Yes.
So, this is not about the construction piece of it. All we're doing tonight is voting on the modification to add senior housing to what is already in place with independent living.
Yes, ma'am. But condition number ten, that we're adding with the development agreement, we can handle all of that within a development agreement.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. And with that, I'd like to make, go ahead.
So, Nancy, what he just said was that the items that Commissioner Thomas stated should be in the development agreement. I want to make sure that that's clear. And the thing that I would like to have in the development agreement is that it is contingent, the funds, if we've got to go back and add the funds, which now I understand why we're doing the funds, that it is contingent on the DCA project being approved, because this is an application. So, in the development agreement, there should be a contingency that the funds are given based on the applicant being approved, because they haven't been approved yet. It's an application process. And also, in the development agreement, it should be specified that the funds are specific to this Henry County project. And that's number ten that's been added to this resolution, Chair.
Right. And I don't think the funds would be dispersed anyway until the application has been approved. Is that correct?
They technically wouldn't be dispersed until closing.
Okay.
To give you an idea, if I may, on the timeline. Now, we don't know for sure it's not posted, but November, for the last, how long I've been doing this, ten years, has been when DCA announces. It's through a competitive process, which developments. And then, it takes, it does take several months from that time to work with the planning staff on the site plan, design elements. So, it's often, you know, into twenty twenty-three before closing would happen, just so the county's aware of the timeframe.
So, again, Nancy. We would, if we vote to give the money, they would need this money to go to closing prior to this project being approved by DCA. So, I would like to make sure that legally, that if we're transferring money to a private organization who's not been approved for this project yet, who does not own the property yet, and I think then that we have to have some type of contingency.
Right. And I was talking to the county manager about that. We discussed that also, I believe. And what we decided is that we are going to attempt to bring it back on the agenda on May the third, which will give us an opportunity to work out the kinks and to ensure that if we do a contingency, excuse me, that whatever language that we use, not with this particular item and modification, but separately, if the money is allocated to them, that there are contingencies in there that indicates when the money can be used or if the county has to provide the monies to them.
So, okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Holmes, go ahead.
Can you talk about the threshold that you have to meet in terms of the number of tax credits from DCA? Don't you have to meet a certain threshold? You have to have public transportation, you have to have shopping, you have to have certain things.
That's right. That's a great question.
In that particular area, I mean, it seems like it'd be difficult to acquire the number of things you need to get full credit.
Yeah, so DCA has a very, I used to work administering this program at DCA. So, there's a very complicated scoring system that changes each year. One of the key ones is your access to nearby amenities, judged by, it's tiered based on whether you're within a half-mile, a mile, a mile and a half. And it includes things like access to grocery stores, retail, restaurants, doctor's office, pharmacies, transit. There's post office, bank. And so, when we first evaluated this site, we were thinking this would not, they wouldn't qualify for the max twenty points, is really what you have to have. But because that public center is so close, walking distance, you get the max points for a number of categories, the grocery store, pharmacy, doctor's office, restaurant. And we've confirmed the items, and those will be accepted by DCA. In addition to the access to the local school that's nearby, it does get the maximum points. And it's something we're, we happen to have expertise in. We've been successful in this process for six straight years. And so, we are confident about how competitive this application will be. Again, it is extremely competitive. DCA typically gets seventy to up to ninety because the need is so high, and it can only fund about thirty. So, it is a highly competitive process, that you've got to scrap and claw and get each point. One other benefit to the soft funds is DCA does reward applications where there's a local government partner that has dedicated some funding. And so, that is another reason why it's important to consider that request with the ARPA funds.
So, Commissioner Clemens and then Thomas.
I just want to publicly state that I think this is a great project. I think it's a great use of the ARPA funds. I think it's needed. I just want to make sure that from a fiduciary responsibility, that it is so competitive. I understand the need. The need may get us over, but they're going to be, you're going to be competing against communities that have public transit, and we don't. And so, if for some reason you don't get it, and I know you've been doing it, but the communities did not look like ours. If you can show me a community that looked like Henry County that you won with, I would feel better. But when I looked it up, I saw the communities that you've been in, and it's great, but they don't look like Henry County. And so, I would really want to make sure, back to Nancy, totally support it, but I just want to make sure that if for some reason when you transfer these monies, that they don't, that the county can recoup the monies with a deadline, an immediate amount of time that they have to. And what is our repercussions if not? I just want to make sure that that's in there.
Well, Commissioner, I would echo that that is the wise approach. In fact,
Thank you.
we couldn't, unless we are funded, we wouldn't be able to deploy the funds for the purpose ourselves. And so, we would also, from our perspective and our attorneys, you know, have to have that consideration. As far as this county's context, you actually would be surprised. Cherokee County, last year, we were successful in getting funding. It did not qualify for the transit points. It has on-call transit. But because it has access to so many other amenities, including a low-poverty census tract, access to quality schools, it is almost the exact same profile in Cherokee. I'm not saying the county whole or demographics. I'm saying that particular census tract, in terms of the competitive process of DCA, translates almost exactly to this situation. So, we, again, we can't guarantee, but we feel very good that it has a great chance.
Go fight for it. Commissioner Thomas?
And with that, I'd like to put forth a approval resolution. I'd like to put forth the resolution to approve the request to add the language that's needed in the resolution for independent living facility, I think is what you said, to the zoning that's now in place for this applicant or any other applicant. Let's just add that language in there. I also want to add to my resolution that the additions that we discussed, being the development agreement, as you stated as well. So, I want to put forth this request for approval from this board.
So, we've got a motion on the floor. Can we get a second?
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Clemens. Any further discussion? Here and now, all in favor? Any opposed? Any sustained? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is RZ twenty-one dash zero eight, McGarrettie Commercial Properties LLC, McDonough.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
No. What is this? Yeah, you take that over there.
Take it to the clerk.
Yeah.
Don't anybody know who she is? Take that to the clerk. You have to take it to the clerk.
Nancy, what is this for?
I have no, I'm not sure.
Reporter for?
Hey, officer, could you find out what the individual?
The front needs from the board, please.
So, can you move that somewhere else? I'm saying, can you move that somewhere else? Thank you. Okay. Go ahead, Stacey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, the item before you is a rezoning request that had the public hearing last October. The original request was a rezoning from the current zoning of C-three, Highway Commercial, to M-one, which is light manufacturing. It's our understanding that that's no longer the request that's feasible. It's our understanding that that's, that's no longer the, um, the request that's feasible. Indeed, planning staff had recommended denial of that original request, but approval of an alternate zoning, which is MU mixed-use. The subject property is located on North Bridges, as illustrated in green, and it backs up to I seventy-five on the east side of the interstate. Future land use map does designate the subject property for mixed-use land uses. This is not a public hearing, as the public hearing was held back in October, and the vote was, was tabled, uh, to November at that time, but then the applicant tabled it, and then it's been postponed and, and pushed forward until tonight. Staff did evaluate the applicant's request. Again, we do recommend mixed-use with certain conditions. We've taken the time since last October to work with the applicant and to, to try to come to some consensus, and we feel that we've been very successful, not to incorporate exactly what staff was recommending, not to incorporate exactly what the applicant team would prefer, but to come up with something that's reasonable and feasible, um, that, um, both the county and the applicant team can, um, live with and support. And so we do recommend approval of the, the conditions that are in your exhibit books. Um, with a, an addition, uh, it was brought to our attention that it's very possible that there would be a, um, multifamily component to this project, and yet originally we had not recommended a minimum size for these units. So we're adding a condition twenty-eight. And that's gonna be illustrated on the overhead. And what it says is that the minimum one-bedroom would be six hundred fifty square feet. The minimum two-bedroom would be one thousand fifty square feet. And the minimum three-bedroom would be a minimum one thousand four hundred and fifty square feet. So this condition has been added to the conditions that are in your exhibit book. Um, otherwise, we, we've, um, we've, we've come as close as we can to having consensus, and I'd be pleased to answer the questions that you have.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, okay, um, so we've already had the, the, the public hearing on this. Um, I, uh, think Commissioner Clemens had a question.
Um, Stacy, on the apartment sizes, we have the apartments that are on Jonesboro Road that are already priced out of just way overboard. This is increasing the sizes, which is increases the amount of money. Why can't we stay with the size of the units that we already have? And that's what I would prefer?
Yes, ma'am.
I know that I've talked to staff about that, and for some reason you all thought that the board wanted to make them bigger. Well, I don't think we want to continue to raise prices on these.
Yes, ma'am. And let me respond if I could. O- originally, that was staff's recommendation that we go larger. In other words, um, we, we had thought about recommending seven fifty, eleven hundred, fifteen hundred, but what we did was to bring it down to something that was more in keeping with what South City was approved at. And, and this is, um, largely what South City had gotten approved for. In other words, South City was approved as a one-bedroom for six forty, but they had to meet an average. We wanted to simplify that and just say six fifty for one-bedroom, but the two and three, this is exactly the sizes that was approved for South City.
Right, so, um, Commissioner Anglin, this is your, um, currently your district, um, which, do you have any comments or anything on this?
Just want to tell Stacy and Tucson, thank you in working with us on this project. The goal was to get away from manufacturing here, uh, so that we don't have tractor-trailers that are gonna be on Jonesboro Road, and to bring in a much higher-quality unit into that space, that hopefully we can also get some entertainment there as well for families as well. So that's the reason why we went this direction with this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Uh, Commissioner Thomas.
Commissioner. In your, in your plan here, th- this is apartments plus single-family homes, correct? Am I looking at the right one?
Yes, ma'am. So, um, let me just state that the applicant had requested M one for a big-box warehousing and distribution center, and we did not recommend approval of that at all. Instead, we're recommending an alternative of mixed-use for which the property owner does not have a buyer. They don't have someone right now ready to pull permits. So what we wanted to do was to craft zoning conditions that would allow for creativity and flexibility and a range of land uses that would be appropriate for this area, so that if they found a developer of entertainment or apartments, um, the, the retail on the ground floor with the residences above, um, or, or even townhomes or single-family, um, we, we wanted them to be able to do that with the appropriate conditions. So these conditions would allow for a wide range of different uses, but not that big-box warehousing and distribution.
Okay, so this is, this is just concept that I'm looking at. Okay, well, I have no question, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Anglin.
The goal was to lay the groundwork ahead of time, so this was not done on the back end. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So, uh, I'm going to call for a motion, um, to approve the, the resolution of changing from, what is it, M one, to?
The, the rezoning would be from the current zoning of C three
C three to MU.
to MU mixed-use.
Okay.
Comments?
Oh.
I may have missed that part.
No, it, it, we've already had public comments on this.
My, my apologies.
Yes.
Um, in the mixed-use?
Um, manufacturing and warehouses is allowed in mixed-use?
No, um, we, we have looked at the code, and those sorts of uses are not allowed in the mixed-use. So that's something that we definitely wanted to be sure was prohibited. That's not, um, gonna be allowed under this zoning.
And that's in our code that it's not?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Oh, I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, okay, okay. Wait a minute, okay, okay.
Sorry, I thought you made the motion.
Okay, no, I did. So you're making a motion.
My second.
Okay. Got a second. Uh, is there any other discussion?
Madam Chair, just for clarification, the motion was for approval with the conditions as presented.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so got a motion and a second. If there's no discussion, all in favor. Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome. Uh, next item on the agenda is RZ dash twenty-one dash twenty, Blue River Development LLC, Cummings, Georgia.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. The item before you is a property located at six four six North Ola Road, three two one and three two three Snapping Shoals Road, and is eighty-one point zero two eight plus or minus acres. Uh, this is the current, uh, thi- this is the aerial of the property. It will take access on North Ola as well as Snapping Shoals. The properties currently zoned are a residential agricultural with a future land use map designation for low-density residential, supporting up to two dwelling units per net acre. Uh, this is the site plan of the proposed project, uh, and this is the colored rendering. Uh, I should be clear, these two documents were updated as of yesterday, April eighteenth. Uh, the proposed development will include ninety-five lots and again take access onto North Ola and Snapping Shoals. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from RA residential agricultural to R two, single-family residential on sewer. The ninety-five single-family lot residential subdivision will have a density of one point seven five dwelling units per net acre, uh, which is supported by the future land use map designation of low-density. Uh, here are some comments that we've received from some of the other departments. Uh, these are some renderings that were provided to staff, uh, on April fourteenth, I believe, the last Thursday. Uh, and this is, uh, on July twenty-second, two thousand and one, the zoning advisory board did recommend approval of the request with conditions. Uh, staff has since revised the recommended, recommended conditions shown in your exhibit books. Uh, there were some changes that staff wanted to make, particularly to condition six, eight, nine, ten, eleven, fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, and twenty-one, uh, with the final set shown here on the overhead projection. I, I will now read the, those revised conditions. Uh, so the first revision is to number six, uh, the current, uh, again, these changes are shown on the overhead. Uh, six, there shall be an always-stop signs at the first and third interval, internal intersections. All other intersections shall have speed tables designed and constructed to Henry County DOT standards. Uh, number eight, there shall be a five-foot-wide sidewalk with street trees and pedestrian lights along interior streets along frontage of building lots in keeping with figure eight point eight, that is in reference to our ULDC, uh, as well as eight-foot-wide sidewalks along interior streets in all other instances, common areas, amenities, or buffer areas. Number nine, the total number of dwelling units shall not exceed ninety-five lots. Compliance with zoning conditions and development standards may further limit the number of dwelling units. Number ten, each permitted home in the development shall be compatible with existing homes as determined by, by the planning and zoning department. The planning and zoning department is authorized to require the heated square footage to be increased and/or architectural style to be modified in instances where incompatibility is determined. All homes shall be a minimum of two thousand three hundred square foot of heated floor space. The first thirty-one lots off, off of North Ola entrance may be eighteen thousand square feet with lot widths of one hundred feet and shall be within substantial compliance of the concept plan titled North Ola Road and dated April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, condition eleven, planning and zoning staff shall provide final approval for all elevations before any permits are issued. Number fourteen, all homes shall consist of three-sides brick or stone. Up to twenty percent of an accent material, which may include cement fiberboard, is allowed. The rear elevation shall consist of brick, stone, or cement fiberboard and have a three-foot-tall brick or stone water table. Vinyl shall only be used in the soffits or eaves. All gabled and hip roofs shall have eaves of at least one foot in depth. Condition fifteen, there shall be a fifty-foot undisturbed or enhanced buffer around the property boundary with the exception of any existing recorded easements, but within the lots. The buffer shall meet the standards of chapter five, section five oh two zero zero of the ULDC. Change first number sixteen, there shall be a twenty-foot landscape buffer along the rear property line of those that share a rear property line ten feet along each property line, which may be on the residential lots, meeting the requirements of chapter five, section five oh two zero zero of the ULDC, and shall be within substantial compliance of the concept plan titled North Ola Road and dated April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Tree safe practices shall be, shall be implemented for the buffer. Any trees removed shall be replanted. Uh, that change to condition nineteen, all stormwater management facilities shall be on their own lot, secured by a five-foot-high fence and screened from the view of streets and building lots by a screening buffer, meeting the standards of the ULDC, chapter five. All driveway access easements, emergency access easements must be paved and dust-free. And the last remaining change was to condition twenty-one. Amenities shall be provided to include the following at a minimum. Minimum one thousand five hundred square foot open-air pavilion with fire pit and grilling area. B, children's playground, and C, pocket parks. That concludes the changes staff wanted to make. Uh, there are two more conditions shown there. Thank you, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, we'll hold off for now. Uh, this is a public hearing. Those that are wishing to speak in favor, uh, of the project, please come forward. We have a collective total of ten minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Andy Welch. I'm representing the, uh, Blue River, the applicant for this rezoning tonight. We have just a brief presentation to go over with the board, um, in making this, in making this, uh, application. Uh, staff's already explained to you, of course, the zoning, uh, of the area and the, the, that this would be consistent with the other adjoining subdivisions that have already been rezoned, um, in this particular area. Um, and that the request, of course, is consistent with our future land use map for the, uh, this particular area. This was the, um, layout plan that we had submitted with our application, um, and you'll, and I just wanted to point this out to you that is significantly changed, uh, as a result of discussions with the commissioner and the staff, um, and modified to address their concerns. I'll point out a few of those issues. Uh, the first is that the staff and commissioner wanted a hundred-foot setback buffer along North Ola Road. Here would be the stopping area for the, um, the mailbox facility. It is gated subdivision. Um, the access point was coming into Snapping Shoals Road, but that's going to be just an emergency, an exit point, an emergency access. It will not be a main flow-through entrance. That will all be off of North Ola Road. Um, in addition, we've added pocket parks here and here. Um, and there were amenities that you, that staff just went over that will be added to these various parks. Um, in addition, the staff had asked for stormwater to have access to the detention ponds. We've provided that as part of the development, so there will be access points to these detention facilities that stormwater management can come in, see them, investigate, and, and make any adjustments that need to be made. Uh, that's true for all the, uh, the detention facilities. Um, in addition, there's gonna be speed bumps that'll be put into this, uh, development to slow traffic, especially along this, uh, this corridor here. Um, in addition, there are a fifty-foot, um, effectively a tree-safe buffer area around the entire perimeter of the development. This is included in the lots, but this is to be preserved, um, in the development of the subdivision. Um, those are sort of the highlights of this, but this was also, this, there was a lot that was here that's been removed so the pocket park can provide access for the entire subdivision to the lake. That is a feature for this development. Those are the main highlights that I wanted to point out to you. Those are significant changes from the previous layout that was, um, that, that the staff had reviewed and that the zoning advisory board had recommended approval on. But I think that these are all enhancements to the development, um, that, uh, the sta- both staff and the commissioner wanted for that, for the district. Uh, general approach will have a gated subdivision with, with a monument-based entrance so that you can see what the subdivision is. And then we, you saw earlier, some of the, the homes, these are gonna be at least three-sided brick, um, uh, homes for this development. And again, this is the layout for the subdivision that I mentioned earlier. This complies with the, all the criteria that the staff has and that you have for a rezoning. Um, it meets those criteria. The staff's recommended approval with the conditions that they just set forth, and the zoning advisory board has also recommended approval of this, um, as well. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions for you, but we'd ask respectfully for your approval of this particular rezoning. Um, and I stand ready to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, uh, that wish to come to speak in favor of the project? Is there anyone here, uh, that would like to come forward to speak in opposition of the project? Please come forward. Is there anyone here wishing? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition of the project? Please come forward. Commissioner Anglin, this is in your district.
Yeah, just a few comments. So first, I want to tell staff, thank you to the new level of standards that we're holding in District 3 and in the Ola area, which will also be implemented in Kellytown as we're working together. Thank you to Blue River Development on working with us in putting these higher standards in place. With that being said, I just want to make sure a couple of things are in place for the folks that are here. The 100-foot road buffer, that was very important to help mask the subdivision from the surrounding area. Also, the 50-foot buffer that goes around the entire area to help protect the property lines of those other property owners. It will be gated to ensure safety for the community while helping to reduce the impact on our military for District 3. They did agree to put two parts within this community, also a pavilion and picnic area with a playground for the residents. The sidewalks were a huge enhancement along with the landscape trees that we have and the streetlights and making sure we maintain our larger lot sizes that we desire in the Ola area. With that being said, because this has been a hot topic, no more than 3% of those homes in there shall be rented or leased. So I want to tell Blue River, once again, thank y'all for working with us and meet these higher standards for this subdivision. So with that, I called a motion to approve conditions as presented by staff.
We got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't know opposition had been called. I must have missed that.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. Okay. So Stephanie, do we have anyone here for public comments?
No, ma'am.
We don't have any, any minutes to be approved? Okay. All right. So our next upcoming meeting is May 3rd, 2022 at 9:00 AM, be our regular scheduled BLC meeting. And May 17th, 2022 at 6:30 PM, regular BLC meeting. Does any Commissioners have any special events that they would like to announce? Okay. Hearing none, motion, we are adjourned. Everyone have a great evening.